Seeing it's 5:30, we're going to call the Marshall City Council into order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would like to start with approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by C, second by John. Any discussion? Go to voting. Sharon, I did my mouse.
This works.
My vote, there we go. It did. Voting is closed. I believe. A motion carried. Next on the agenda is public hearings. We have the issuance of revenue bonds by the South Dakota Health and Education Facility Authority for Avera Health to finance a project located in the city of Marshall. So we will open up this public hearing. Do you have this from Sharon?
We are going to have our Director of Administrative Services give a brief overview of this particular bonding request. We also have two representatives from Avera present here, and I believe there's also some presence via Zoom. So we'll start off, if it's okay with you, to have the Director of Administrative Services give an overview.
That'd be great. Thank you. So the city is being asked to provide host approval for this issuance in compliance with IRS guidelines relating to tax-exempt conduit revenue bonds. Host approval requires us to have a public hearing and adopt an approving resolution, which must be provided by the city in order for the South Dakota Authority to issue such bonds. We're required to do this because the project financed by the bonds is within the city limits of Marshall. So Avera plans to do some work, which will have Avera speak to. And then just want to remind her that as with all conduit revenue bonds, the city will have no obligations to pay the bonds even if the project encounters financial difficulties, which we don't expect anyway. But just to assure you that the issuance of these bonds also by the South Dakota Authority will not impact us in any way. So we're required to have a TEFRA hearing, which is a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act. It's an IRS requirement for a nonprofit borrower seeking tax-exempt bonds through a conduit issuer. The hearing is to allow members of the public to, you know, comment, contest, oppose, or support the use of these bonds for a nonprofit borrower that is providing a public benefit. So again, with us in the room tonight are a couple of people from Avera, Kristi Kudron and Tracy Deitz. And I believe Tracy would like to, will give a brief overview of the project.
So this bond is related to several projects across the Avera footprint, as well as funding for some debt refinancing. We're still in the early phases of deciding specific what projects it will be as Avera whole, but for the Avera-Marshall region, it's related to our pharmacy remodel on the hospital campus. Just if you have questions.
Just if you have questions or anything.
Does the council have any questions for Steve? Oh, you pulled your mic down, so. No questions? Does anybody in the public have any questions? Seeing that there is no questions, I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
I have a motion by Amanda and a second by C. You want any discussion? We can take that to a vote.
Do we still need to vote in the minutes? Because I still have that up.
Well, they passed.
We did the agenda.
Oh, we didn't do the minutes.
We did the agenda, but we didn't do the minutes.
Stephen, did we goof that up?
Yes.
We did minutes.
Minutes. That's what I thought we did.
Because I didn't vote on minutes.
Yes.
Said you did.
I thought I did.
Stephen, we voted on the minutes, correct?
I don't think we vote on the agenda. It's just a verbal, do you okay with the agenda? And then we only vote on the minutes. So that might have been part of the confusion there.
Okay.
So we're voting on closing the public hearing now.
Refresh your page.
No refresh. Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
Voted twice. She's good.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Voting is closed. Motion carries. We are now looking for a motion on the funding. Any questions? Any further discussion on it? Looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by John. Any further discussion? No. Voting is closed. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Project ST. Thank you for coming. Project ST-010 Lion Circle Reconstruction Project. Jason?
Thank you. The project presented tonight is the complete reconstruction of the Lion Circle Street and Utilities. Included with the street is the curb and gutter, all the driveway approaches on Lion Circle, in addition to the sanitary sewer and some storm sewer work at the intersection with Lion Street. All property owners affected were notified, according to law, that this hearing would be held. This project has been included in our CIP for a number of years, and it's been deferred until now, where we're considering it tonight. The proposed circle will be narrower than it is today in an effort to save on funds due to the low traffic demand on the circle. The engineer's estimate for the project, including contingency and engineering fees, is approximately $275,000. All improvements would be assessed according to our current special assessment policy. So with that, we've got to consider tonight the resolution ordering the improvement in preparation of plans, as well as the resolution approving the plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids. I can answer any questions if we have them.
I don't have any questions, but this has come through PINT. Actually, this has been booted a couple of years. I think this started three years ago, actually. And it's been moved back due to budget constraints. And this year it came forward. This is probably the only street we have in Marshall that is not pavement. I mean, it's virtually a gravel street. So it is time that this gets done. And I think the city has done a good job resizing this. City staff has to fit the needs there because there's a very few property owners. I think there's about four of them, Jason total, on the project.
If that.
So I think it is time. Like I said, we've pushed this project three years, and the consensus out of PINT was unanimous support of the project. So council has any further questions for staff or anybody in the public that would like to speak on it? With that, I'm looking for a motion. Not seeing anybody coming up, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, second by John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Now we'll try to close voting. Did it go through that time? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, or next option would be to approve the resolution.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will open a vote. Voting closed. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. First on the consent agenda is--
There is one more resolution.
Oh, there is. Sorry. We're looking. Oh, there's a third resolution. A resolution to approve plans and specifications, order an advertisement for bids.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
A second.
Any further discussion on that? Thank you, Steve. Seeing there's no more further discussion, open up the voting. Close the voting. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. First on the consent agenda is consider approval of event and reoccurring use contracts for use at the adult community center. Next is vacation of utility easement in Minnesota Corn Processors Industrial Park First Edition. Receive petition for vacation and call for a public hearing. Next is consider requests for Shades of the Past Car Club, May 31, 2024, cruise on June 1, 2024 car show. Number seven, approve of the service agreement for concessions at the amateur sports complex. Number eight is Liberty Park Banshaw Project. Approval of resolution of support to apply for Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. And number nine is consider approval of the bills and projects payments. Is there anything that members of the council want pulled off the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as written.
A second.
A motion by Steve is seconded by Amanda. Any further discussion? Move on to a vote. Close the voting. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is new business, Channel Parkway Edition, approval of preliminary plat, and resolution approving the final plat. Jason, I'm assuming this is yours?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Included in the packet, you've got a copy of the preliminary plat and final plat of Channel Parkway Edition. Also included is the engineer's checklist for both preliminary and final plat. This is related to the city's proposed sale for the development of the SWWC 16,000 square foot facility at the corner of London Road and Channel Parkway. This plat has gone through the normal process. We had a public hearing at Planning Commission. I don't believe we had any comments at Planning Commission, but city staff has worked with the surveyor on this plat to help ensure that it conforms to city ordinances, and we would recommend to move forward. We have no further comments, and I can answer any questions if we have them.
Is there any questions for Jason? Amanda, your planning commission was--
Yeah, there were no public comments or concerns, or either from the commission either. They just had good questions about Southwest, West Central, but nothing about the plat or project.
With that, I'm looking for a motion on the--
I would make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Channel Parkway.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. A motion by Amanda, second by C. Any further discussion? Seeing none, is open a vote. We'll close the voting. Then Jason, we got to take a motion on the second for resolution for the final plat, too, correct?
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion on the resolution approving the final plat.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion carries. Next item on new business, consider resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2024A, and general obligation grant anticipation note, Series 2024B. EJ, I'm assuming this is up your alley?
Correct. So as stated within the document, 2024A deals with our GO bonds. So this includes the different projects related to street reconstruction, which is South Whitney. It relates to our abatement bonds, which relates to parks projects for Independence Park, as well as Legion Field. It relates to airport, which is both the ILS, the instrument landing system, and the SRE building. And then finally, it relates to the improvement portion, which was just addressed earlier with the Lion Circle. For those are the projects that are part of this. So we do have, from what's in the resolution presented in the packet, we do have updated amounts. We've been continuing to work with Baker Tilly on this. So we want you to approve the concept of a resolution, but I can update the amounts as necessary right away. If we go, we'll show you on the screen here first. Stephen pulled up a document here for us that we got today that shows the breakdown of the street reconstruction, the abatement, the airport, and the improvement portions. So we're looking at the bond issuance of $3,875,000 for the As. What's in the document before you is $3,785,000. It's not that the number is transposed. It just happened to work out that with some of the tweaks we had to make, that's just how the numbers flowed. So it's $3,875,000 is the new number. And then the numbers in the packet will relate to that, the par amount of the bonds on the first line. So the packet shows $1,530,000. For the street reconstruction, it's actually $1,570,000 with the revision. The $600,000 abatement is correct. That did not change. The improvement moved up slightly to $290,000. And then the airport portion is the $1,415,000. So again, the total amounts will be $3,875,000 for what's in there is the first resolution for the bonds. The other piece, I'll address them both, and then we can, you can do what you'd like with them. But the second piece I'd like to address, if you want to go to page 22, Stephen, deals with the B, Series B. Those are grant anticipation notes. This is just due to the timing of the state and federal grants for the SRE building. We're looking at their portion being the $2,590,000. We're looking to finance that so we can have that money upfront, just because of their funding levels within the federal programs, especially, and the timing of that, that we don't want to delay the project from being completed while we're waiting for grant paperwork from them. So this is a short-term anticipation note. It's a one-year issuance with a six-month call feature. So we could pay it off early if the funding is available. Otherwise, it'd be a one-year feature.
So on this bond, I know it's grant money we're going to have to pay off. There's no payback from the government because of the interest carry that we have to have for having this bond for a year. That's just a cost we have to absorb to make sure our project stays on time.
That is correct. If you look at this document, you see that the par value of the bonds is the $2,590,000. We're ultimately going to receive the $2,454,000. And then the difference is going towards, we have to capitalize interest because we have a six-month payment that's due that we didn't obviously, or levy for this year. So part of the bonds would go towards that. And then issuance costs, underwriters discount, et cetera, would come out of this bond. And then when we get the grant monies in, we're just going to be a little short, so that increased our portion a little bit on the airport itself, or what we're going to finance over the 10 years as part of the bonds. Not part of this, but part of the bonds.
So that extra money is coming from where?
So the extra money is just, it's coming ultimately from the taxpayers of having to put that on the levy.
You said we didn't levy for it. It's just come out of the reserves.
We didn't. Oh, sorry. We didn't levy for it, so we're capitalizing the interest so we get some as part of the issuance here. So it'll help make the payment this year. And then next year, we will have, hopefully, the grant funds should be in in time to pay off everything.
So ideally, what you're saying is that--
But there is a gap there that we have to now finance over 10 years as part of the bonds, that our share had to increase slightly, cover some of these issuance costs, as well as the capitalized interest and the like.
And we also have money out there with other airports or other entities, correct, Jason? Is, how long does it take to get that money back? Is that starting to come back, or what's that process?
Yeah, that'll all be done. TKDA will help us navigate that through the FAA. That all kind of gets done on the backdoor side. That's part of the AIP funds, which are built into our grants. It's part of our grant use, so.
Thank you. Was there any further questions from other council members?
So I just wanted to quick point out, if I may, that the approval tonight will authorize the sale and to go through the process. And then we would come back with sale numbers for the council to consider at the first meeting in April, so April 9.
What are their projections for sale price, interest rate? Have they thrown out projections? I know you and I have chatted about this for months on end, and--
Yep.
They've gone down a little. I mean, our costs have gone down a little bit, thankfully.
Correct. From earlier projections, they were, some of them were over 4% interest. And then just with the dollar amounts, you know, the projects have come in under what has been expected, or what was anticipated for both the SRE and the South Whitney Street project. So with the bond amount going down, and as well as interest costs going down, we have seen some savings. Right now, they're projecting a true interest cost to us of about 3.22%. Again, it was over 4% as of around six months ago.
That's 1% savings. That's significant on a $2 billion, $2.5 million bond.
Absolutely.
So. Any further questions? Should we take these as two motions, each bond separately? What is--
You could either do them together or separate, whichever you'd prefer.
To me, I would do them together, but it's, you know, is that over the council? Whoever makes the motion.
I would move that we approve the sale, or the sale of these bonds--
With the revised amounts, please.
With the revised amounts, as per EJ. The correct amounts.
Correct.
As written.
We have a motion by Steve, a second by C. I do believe that the bonds have to pass with a 60% vote of the folks here, correct?
That is correct.
So just so you guys are not, doesn't matter how you vote, but it has to pass by 60%? So--
Mr. Mayor--
Yes.
Or Tom. If there's any concern that the council would have any difference of opinion based on the separate bonds, it would be a good idea to do them by separate motions.
Everybody shaking their head no, so I would feel comfortable in that. I would call for the vote on the bonds then. I close the voting. Motion carried. So that covered both bonds. On to the next item is council reports. So we will start on your end, Steve.
I was not able to go to EDA because I had work. Do we have one? I don't think so. But I wasn't there.
We've had meetings since then, I believe.
Yes. I think so.
I think I talked about it last time.
Okay, Steve, is that--
Yeah, the only thing that met the AC, the Adult Community Center has not met yet. The Cable Commission hasn't met for a very long time.
Perfect. Amanda?
Public Housing had their open meeting yesterday, talked about the 2024 Capital Fund projects. They're going to be removing some sheds and adding garages at four locations and replacing unit doors at one of their locations. It was a good meeting, not a lot of questions. One person had concerns about a couple maintenance items that will be addressed. So it was good. That was it for me.
My committees did not meet. John?
Nothing.
DEI Commission met last week, and at our next meeting, we will be having our strategic plan. So we are meeting in a couple weeks here to try to get the behind-the-scenes things ready for it. And then Library met yesterday, and they did their, they just did their strategic planning. So they had the numbers, and they had 90,000 visitors, and that pre-COVID is 104,000. So they're getting back up there. You know, they're really happy with that number. They are finally fully staffed. And just an update on the daycare reading program, they've had volunteers go and read at the daycare, and they said that's been going really well. And then they're looking at getting an open and closed sign so that people can see if the library is open and closed from the street without having come all the way up to the door. What was it?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all I have.
Next, I did these backwards, but we're going to do council member individual items. See, I'm going to start on your end, because we never get to start on our end.
No, we don't. Well, individual. I don't have anything.
John?
Nothing.
The only thing I have is, we're short a couple members, and I think we had a nice short meeting, and it went well. And other than that, enjoy the nice weather. Amanda?
I've got nothing.
Steve?
So I've got a couple of issues, and I'm going to ask Administrator Hanson to address a couple of them. I've had a couple of constituents talk to me about North Ambulance issue. So I'll ask you to comment on that. And then the other thing is, as we start walking dogs, please clean up after your pet.
That's a discussion we had a month ago already, so. Next is staff reports. We'll start with city administrator.
Yes, Councilmember Meister. We have been in discussions with North Memorial, and I know I've provided updates to the council in my weekly email update. I have to check with the regulatory agency, which is EM-SRB. There is, I believe, a meeting scheduled this Friday to try to resolve those that have contested their application to go from a full-time advanced life support to part-time advanced life support. They actually had 10 objections to that. I believe there was a number of them within the city, but I also am, my understanding, that there has been some objections from ambulance services outside the Marshall license PSAP area. If they cannot resolve these objections, that being North Memorial, it then would be brought forward to an administrative law judge who would conduct a public hearing here in Marshall. We are also meeting individually with North Ambulance. We have met with Avera as well. We are concerned, at the same time, we realize the landscape of ambulance services in the state of Minnesota. Staffing is an issue, and that certainly is a case for North Memorial. They'd like to bring on more paramedics. We know that funding is also an issue as well across the state. So we're in a real tough spot. The city of Marshall has the license. We are the license holder. We've had really good success with North Ambulance operating our license. Prior to that, the city of Marshall operated the ambulance. We employed employees. We had the director. The mayor would know more history, of course, than I, but I can't remember the timeline. We decided to contract with North Ambulance some year, number of years ago, and it's really been operating well up until this point, when there's been this request for a reduction in their license. Our understanding is that they do want some flexibility to provide some of the service. And at the same time, I know EM-SRB, the regulatory agency, has really kind of tightened up some of their rules as well. And that was as a result of the legislative auditor. I think it was two years ago, did a report on ambulances. And at that time, there's a new director now. I think there is more variance on how licenses could operate, and that's now been tightened up. So there's a number of factors, staffing, revenue, and a more regulated environment for the license. But we're hoping something can be resolved. We'd like to maybe see if North Ambulance can delay this decision. It might happen just through the normal process that they have to go through now as required by Minnesota statutes. So that's just kind of background, and I'd be willing to talk to anybody about it, or provide more time, and certainly meet with anyone who wants more information on it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
You seem versed in this, and Steve, you might be able to help out. When they say going from full-time to part-time, what does that entail? If we have a full-time ambulance service now, what do they mean by part-time?
It's the advanced life support. So we have a lot of the surrounding communities, such as Minnioda and Tracy, have ambulance services, but they're basic life support. What does that mean? It means that if I need to intubate somebody, I need to ventilate somebody, I need an advanced life support. If we don't have that, typically, a physician or a nurse who's trained in advanced life support has to accompany the ambulance. And so, again, with difficulty recruiting from Norris, and I haven't attended any meetings, I'm just going off of what I've heard, but this is a nationwide thing. It's getting harder and harder to get the paramedics. Paramedic is, you have to be a paramedic to do advanced life support. You have to be paramedic to be able to intubate somebody. You have to be a paramedic to be able to push certain medications. It's getting harder and harder to find them, and like everywhere, you know, people don't like being up at all hours on holidays, on nights, and you can't find them, it gets really expensive, and healthcare reimbursements, including ambulance, are going down, so you got that dichotomy, and the demand is never-ending, so that's where it comes down to.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Yeah, other than that, I did send an email out late last week on strategic plan survey. I think it's relatively easy. I would like them back by the end of March, so you've got some time. And if I don't, if you don't get a response, I'll communicate again. But yeah, we're going to work towards that. We have a staff meeting in April to kind of go over some of the topics, and then we are going to have a work session with the entire council in May. So looking forward to updating that, and Councilmember Mulliski mentioned diversity, equity, inclusion, that's going to be really important, too, as we move forward with the next three to four years and what we want to have for goals. So that's all I had, Mr. President, Pro Tem.
Thank you. Jason, Director of Public Works, Jason Anderson.
Thank you. At your next meeting, we should be hopefully entertaining some really strong bids. We have bid opening tomorrow for the Minnesota 23 Sanitary Sewer Lift Station project, where we'll be replacing the pumps and rehabilitating the wet well. On Thursday, March 21, we'll have bid openings for the Chip Seal project and the Mill and Overlay project, so lots of bids to consider at the next meeting, looking forward to opening those. And lastly, on, just I'll update the council that on Thursday evening, Eric Hanson and myself will both be attending the concrete paving awards banquet in Mankato to accept the city's award for Third and Lion Project, the concrete paving award that we received. So just letting you know that we'll be attending that on Thursday night.
Perfect. And I know when you bring up that award, there's a lot of thought, a lot of community effort, there's just a lot of input on that Third Street and Lion Street project. That's a true community project where staff and the folks affected really work together. And I think we, obviously, a lot of other people think we came up with a very, very nice project.
Yes.
So Pam Whitmore, City Attorney?
Nothing from you this evening. Thank you.
There is really nothing else, so we have administrative brief. We're looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion. A second.
Motion by C, second by Amanda. Voting closed. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.